You're live, Chair.
Thank you very much and welcome everybody. I'm just going to explain how this meeting will be conducted as it once again is going to be a remote meeting for anybody who hasn't joined us before whilst we've been working under these conditions. So I'd like to say welcome to everyone and that we are, as I just said, going to be held, this meeting is going to be held fully remotely and in accordance with the temporary legislation changes that allow the council to continue to operate in an open and transparent way. Decisions made at today's meeting are just as applicable as in a traditional meeting setting, provided the numbers of members in attendance ensures the meeting remains corret. I'd like to remind members that this meeting is still being livestreamed to the public and can I request that you all switch off your cameras and mute your microphones when you are not speaking and also ensure that you have your chat bar open for voting purposes. If you wish to raise a point of order, please do so, it can be written into the chat bar. Again, in the chat bar, you can move in second items. There will be a raised hand facility for each agenda item in the chat bar, so please ensure you correct, you look at the correct one for that particular item. Voting will also be carried out using the vote facility located in the chat bar and again, there'll be one place there for each agenda item. Once again, during this pandemic, we learn that so many people have lost their lives due to this dreadful virus and I would like to offer our condolences to all who have lost loved ones as a result of the virus and from other causes. And I now invite Reverend Councillor Malcolm Ling to conduct prayers for us.
Let us pray. O Lord, the God of righteousness and truth, we continue to pray through this medium for this assembled meeting of this county council, for its officers and its members and especially through this difficult time of pandemic, as we give thanks for their dedication to their duties, whatever those duties may be. We pray especially for all those whom we have loved and lost through illness and as a direct result of this pandemic. We pray especially for councillors Brian Jones, Vice Chairman of this council, who himself is recovering from illness and who has offered, also suffered the recent loss of his brother David. And we also pray for councillor Tony Eason, who has recently lost his brother Doug, and praying for too, for all those in this authority and this county who have lost loved ones, giving thanks for their lives, their service and their humanity and asking you, Lord, to comfort those bereaved at this time. We pray also for a true sense of the welfare and needs of all your people and for a mutual respect for each other. O Lord, engender in us a keen thirst always to do justice and to do always what is right and a confidence to do what is good and fitting for all. Give us all the ability, Lord, to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. And so we ask for a personal peace in our own lives and a commitment in the tasks set before us today. We ask for the guidance of your Holy Spirit, Lord, especially during these most difficult of times, as we seek to improve the conditions of all people we may represent. So, Lord, may your kingdom come and your name be hallowed and we ask this of Jesus Christ, our risen Lord. Amen.
Thank you very much, Father Malcolm. So we now move to the agenda and I would just like to say, in order to conduct our business in a timely manner this afternoon, could I request that you please, as I have previously pointed out in these meetings, avoid repetition? Please feel free to agree with what's been said previously, but avoid too much repetition. Thank you. Right, I'll now ask apologies, you can indicate in the chat bar if you wish to give some. I have already received some from councillor Brian Jones and councillor David Duvie. So do we have any further apologies? Now, I'm going to open the chat bar, I'm not sure if mine's working terribly well. Please indicate in there if, or councillor Dave Evans as well. So do we have any further? I'll give you a few moments to indicate in the chat bar.
Chair, I don't know if you're just here, I can't see, but I know he's having internet problems, so if he's not joined us yet, he'll try to join us later.
Thank you, Casper Truney. Any further? Right, okay, thank you. Declarations of interest can be put into the chat bar as we go along, or if anybody wishes to raise any now, please do so. Just indicate you wish to speak and I'll invite you in. Okay, we'll take them as and when. Nothing at the moment. We haven't received any public questions. So now we'll go on to item four. We have no petitions, but I would just like to give some thanks because once again, we must thank, give our thanks and appreciation to Monmouthshire County Council's workforce, who have in the past months, including during the Christmas period, responded to major flooding throughout the county in addition to the pressures placed on them by the pandemic. We can be confident that when duty calls, our men and women step up to the plate and in a social hours and difficult environments, they put the safety of our residents as their priority. Thank you to the many officers and staff who gave up their Christmas break to carry out a variety of duties. It'd be difficult to name them all, but we have officers working on track and trace, processing business grants and all those who work tirelessly keeping residents safe and provided with care and much needed support, including, of course, our wonderful community volunteers. So thank you to everyone playing a part in helping us get through these difficult days, all of the Monmouthshire team. We will not and we must not let this dreadful virus beat us. Right, item five now on the agenda is 5.1, Safeguarding Evaluation Report, April 19 to March 2020. So I'd like to invite councillor Penny Jones to introduce this report to us. Thank you, councillor Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I'm pleased to present this safeguarding evaluation report. The report provides members with an annual update regarding safeguarding activity across the council and evaluates the council's current position across key aspects of safeguarding. I would ask members to receive the report and support this council's ongoing commitment to safeguarding children and adults at risk from harm, neglect and exploitation. Two of the officers from the group are in attendance with me, this Jane Rogers, Head of Children's Services and Safeguarding, and Owen Wilts, Communities and Partnership Development Lead Officer. Owen in particular has been instrumental in supporting safeguarding within community action and volunteering during the pandemic and Jane, as you would expect, in ensuring that protection services to children and families continued to be delivered. This report is based on activity and information from April 2019 to March 2020. However, given the current crisis, the report shows an as-is position and provides information regarding the ways in which a COVID-19 pandemic has affected safeguarding activity. Safeguarding risks within the context of the pandemic are set out within the accompanying risk assessment. The report itself was developed by the members of the whole authority safeguarding group at which every directorate is represented. Each of the five cornerstone of safeguarding are evaluated and a self-assessment score is agreed by the group balancing strengths with areas where further or different activity is required. Out of the five areas, four have remained at the same self-assessment level and one, robust protection, has attracted a cautious score, moving from a score of four important strengths with some areas for improvement to three, strengths outweigh weaknesses. This relates very much to the challenges of providing the full range of protection services within the context of the coronavirus pandemic. Members will also note that two areas, safe workforce and safe services, have retained a self-assessed score of three. Over the last 18 months, these scores have been hard to improve upon than being further compounded by the resource challenges of the pandemic. I am assured by the officers of the group that this has been prompted, that this has prompted some refocusing of the current actions to ensure that future improvements in these important areas are achieved. Nevertheless, despite the challenge of the last few months, the report reflects the council's strength and confidence in safeguarding in numerous ways. The ongoing commitment of each directorate to retain safeguarding at the centre of its activity, with safeguarding issues being centrally incorporated into the emergency response, this is really important. The speedy response to the crisis within safe recruitment and safeguarding training. The commitment to prevention, with a particular reference here to some specific areas, one, the work of the council in supporting the range of community and volunteering activity that sprang up in response to the crisis. Two, the speedy setup of an advice and sports support line to support vulnerable families within two days. Three, the tremendous efforts of housing to support homeless individuals and families during the pandemic. And the invaluable support that the council is providing to provider, third sector and commissioned services, including residential and nursing homes. Moving forward, I would ask members to note the safeguarding activity plan at Appendix Three, which will drive the basis of the work within the directorates and the oversight of the whole authority safeguarding group over the next period. I ask members to receive the report and I move the recommendation for members to receive the annual safeguarding evaluation report and activity plan. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Right, if members wish to comment, we have a raised hand facility in the chat bar. Councillor Powell, can I invite you to speak?
I would, thank you, Chair. I would just like to second councillor Penny Jones's proposal of this report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do any of the members wish to comment or ask questions about the report? I'll give you a few moments. Okay, can I ask if we could have a vote facility, please, in the chat bar to vote on this report, that we receive it? Takes a moment or two to enable that to happen. If we do have any difficulties, we'll do a bit, oh, there we are. Thank you very much. So there we are, there we are, safeguarding evaluation report. If you would indicate where you wish to receive the report, please, for the period April 19 to March 2020, or against abstentions. We have 36 members present, so that's clearly been carried. Looks as though three members have been unable to vote, or maybe 34. So that's clearly carried, so thank you councillor Jones and can we, can I ask you to pass on thanks to the whole safeguarding team, to all the officers for the hard work that's gone into this and the ongoing commitment with regard to safeguarding? Thank you all very much indeed.
I will, Chair, thank you and thank you for the appreciation.
Okay, well, I think we'll now move on to the next item, which is the council tax reduction scheme, which is going to be introduced by councillor Phil Murphy. Councillor Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and the purpose of this report is to present the arrangements for the implementation of the council tax reduction scheme and to approve it for 2021/22 and affirm that in the absence of any revisions or amendments, annual upgrading amendments will be carried out each year without the requirement to adopt the whole council tax reduction scheme. So the recommendations are to note the making of the council tax reduction scheme and to adopt the provisions within the regulations. On the 17th of January 2019, council adopted the CTRS for 1920 in accordance with the council tax reduction schemes and prescribed requirements Wales Regulations of 2013. A failure to adopt a local scheme by the 31st of January this year will result in the default scheme being imposed on the council. The Welsh Government's Regulation 42122 does not contain any significant changes for recipients of council tax reduction. Claimants can receive a reduction of up to 100% of their council tax bill depending upon their income and household circumstances. So although the national scheme has been approved within the prescribed requirement regulations, there is limited discretion given to the council to apply additional discretionary elements that are more generous than the national scheme and which provide for an additional administrative facility. Council approved the discretionary areas to be applied and are listed in item 5.2 in this report following public consultation. It is not proposed to change them in any way, therefore no further consultation is required at this stage. So on the basis of that, Chair, and the fact that there are no alterations to the previous scheme, I recommend that we accept the report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Right, we have a raised hand facility in the chat bar and councillor Dimmock, have indicated you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, Chair, I'd just like to second councillor Murphy.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other members who wish to comment or ask any questions? Councillor Watts.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Obviously, I would, well, I can imagine that we probably find there are a lot more people applying this year. I just had a question about criteria, Phil, so forgive me if it's about, well, specifically can have applications because, as we know, self-employed people have been impacted massively. You know, they are effectively, some of those people now are on the margins really of effectively bankruptcy, I would imagine, for many, many kind of families as well. They are quite vulnerable. Can you explain to me the specific criteria? So, for example, if someone's obviously in employment or effectively already on benefit, there's an evaluation of criteria from, I guess, a month-to-month basis, but for self-employed people, as you well know, the criteria really, in many, many cases, evolves around their end-of-year accounts. So effectively, you know, that you're looking back permanently all the time. Can you explain that a little bit potentially for anybody that is self-employed and looking at this meeting?
I think it's probably better if I defer to Richard Davis there, he's on the call, in fact, he tried to come in just now, didn't he, Richard? Yeah, if you'd like to answer Alan's point.
Yeah, in terms of self-employed people, you're right, they have been adversely affected by the pandemic, I totally agree on this, some of the, some of the people who are probably most adversely affected in actual fact. In terms of council tax reduction criteria, they, we look at their, if they're a new business, we look at the sort of trading position at the moment, so in all likelihood, they would have relatively low level of income when they're starting off a new business. So we don't, in terms of reviewing their assessment, we don't look at trading accounts in quite as much detail as we would for an established business. With council tax reduction, if they're not on universal credit, then we tend to look at, and they're an established business, we tend to look at the previous year's accounts. So that's the way it works. So for, in this year, we would look at last year's accounts. If it's a new business, then we would take a fairly liberal view about a new trading position for the business. If they're on universal credit, there's, there are different arrangements there, but there's something called the minimum income floor, where there's an assumed level of income. That has been suspended at the moment by the government because of the pandemic, so the minimum income floor arrangements assumed that a self-employed business was working at national living, national minimum wage over a 37-hour, a 35-hour week, but those arrangements have been suspended at the moment. So hopefully that's the answer that you need there. I know it's gone into some detail, but it is, it is one of the most complex areas of assessment and we do take as liberal a view as possible in terms of supporting self-employed businesses within the constraints of the assessment process.
Thank you very much, Mr Davis, that's very helpful. Thank you, thank you, councillor Watts. I haven't got anybody else who's indicated they wish to speak, so I shall ask for, looks as though your screen's frozen, councillor Watts. Yeah, seem to have a technical issue there. Nobody else has indicated they wish to speak, so we have the council tax reduction scheme 2021/22 in the vote-up facility, so if you could vote on the recommendations as described by councillor Murphy, 2.1 and 2.2 of the report, thank you very much. I think you've still got your camera on, councillor Watts. Right, so that's clearly been carried. Thank you all very much. Could you check your microphones, please? It would appear somebody's still got their microphone on. Helpful if you could turn it off. Okay, so we'll move on now to the next item, which is the item 5.3, Electoral Review, Responses to Draft Proposals, which is going to be introduced by councillor Paul Jordan. Councillor Jordan.
Thank you, Chair. The Local Democracy and Boundary Commission for Wales are required to periodically review the electoral arrangements for every local authority in Wales under the Local Government Democracy Wales Act 2013. The current review programme began in June 2016 with an expectation that all 22 local authority electoral reviews are completed in time for the 2022 local government's elections, where the outcome of this review will take effect. The commission formally commenced their electoral review for Monmouthshire in July 2020 with an open consultation period for initial proposals from stakeholders running from the 28th of September 2020. The council appointed a cross-party working group to prepare a scheme for Monmouthshire as a whole, which was approved as the preferred council option in July 2020 and submitted to the commission as part of their consultation. Much of the content of that preferred council scheme has been accepted and proposed by the commission with a few variations and the draft response attached for your consideration focuses on those areas of variation. Group leaders and members of the working group met with the commission on the 15th of December 2020 to discuss the proposals in further detail. The working group met on the 5th of January 2021 to consider a response and also received an alternative proposal from the local members for the St Christopher's and Thornwell Ward, which they chose to offer their support to, and this is reflected in the council response. In considering this item today, members will need to consider the county-wide effect of these proposals. Whilst you will naturally be drawn to the implications for your own wards, changes to award will have a knock-on effect to the neighbouring wards surrounding it and need to be considered across the county. If council agree a response, either the attached or amended, it would be submitted to the commission as part of the consultation exercise and a preparation of their final proposals. If response is not agreed, then the council is not, will not submit a response to the commission and individual members and political groups are encouraged to make their own representations to the commission as part of the review. Should a response be approved today, individual members and groups can still respond independently to the commission should they not agree with the elements of the council-wide response. Madam Chairman, I take you to the recommendation in the report that the members approve a response in Appendix A, as agreed by the cross-party working group for the electoral review, to be submitted to the commission as a full council response for their consideration into the full, into the future electoral arrangements for Monmouthshire. Thank you, Madam Jane.
Thank you, councillor Jordan. Unfortunately, your camera seems to have failed, but we did see it at the beginning of the.
You're back, back now.
Back now, thank you. We did see it beginning at the end.
Oh, really good.
Right, we have in our chat bar the raised hand facility and I see councillor Jane Pratt would like to speak. Councillor Pratt.
Chairman, I would like to second councillor Jordan's proposals in item 5.3. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Penny Jones next.
Sorry, Chair, I was going to do the same, it came up at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Simon Howard next.
Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. I'm just speaking on behalf of an issue which arose and I see the member now as joining the meeting. As reference to the working group that we had, a chair which was set up cross-party and that has been set up for some time, as we know, it's been backwards and forwards for many months now, but actually the recommendations from that working group, I believe, submitted weren't the recommendations from that working group, and I'll give you an example, Val will be speaking on that in a moment, but Val, councillor Smith, did inform ourselves that the Lambada, sorry, the areas within the Usk area have been combined together, Lambattick, and the recommendations from that group, that Lambattick, will be separate from Usk. But seemingly the report which was submitted doesn't indicate that, has not made it very clear. So, I mean, on a view of recommendations where we elected members to sit in that group to make, to make that representation, why is it that that has not occurred? And I'm deeply upset of that and the member is not happy about that either. So what has been going on here with this group? Have things been going on within the group, after the group? I mean, I want some clear indication of this working group being set up to represent us as councillors, every one of us, has it been actually functioning correctly? Because if it hasn't, I'd say the whole review is flawed and I feel very strongly about that. I know Val will speak about this because she was a representative from our group on that. So I'll leave it there, Chair, but I'd like an answer to that. Is the report actually a significant response that the team or the group was set up? I don't think it is and Val will speak next on that and I'm really annoyed about that, Chair, thank you.
Councillor Howard, I'll invite councillor Smith to speak next then.
I'm coming through, Chairman. Thank you very much, Chairman. Yes, it's been an interesting report, actually, I've got all the papers behind me still, Chairman. I tend to regard it as a game of Sudoku, as we sort of worked our way over the area, but no, a report that came forward indicated that, my understanding, that there was to be, it was recommended retention of the Lambattick ward incorporating Little Mill and the Usk town. So you had a two-member situation, two wards, a member in each one. Now, the report that is going forward now is, as the Community Council for Lambattick termed it, we've been lumped together. It is to be a dual-member ward. I'm not comfortable with this situation and I will be making, in conjunction with Lambattick Community Council, representations to the commission. It's been a very interesting journey, Chairman, and interesting, I find now, that I'm better informed than I was when I started out. So yes, I think Simon was worried about the way the procedures, no, I think that's okay, but just somewhere along the line, something has, the dual representation for this ward did surprise me and then a recommendation that came to our last working group, I think, that it should, that Lambattick would be retained and then again, it has gone forward to a dual one, so not a great concern, Chairman, can't accept the report, will make representations myself and thank you very much and thank you, Simon. And thank you, Simon. Life has calmed down a bit now, dear.
Thank you, Councilor Smith, for clarifying that. And we have nobody else who's indicated they wish to speak on this matter. Oh, Councilor Richard John.
Thank you very much. Well, perhaps firstly, I can respond to some of those points made by Simon Howard and Val Smith, as I was one of the four members of the cross-party panel. In the submission that we made, that we approved, the full council approved back in July 2020, we recommended that Lambattick and Usk be, be put together because when the when the Boundary Commission started their initial consultation, they were very clear that they wanted wards to be roughly 1,599 electors per councillor. And while they would accept a bit of variation within that, they wouldn't accept any variation greater than 25%. And the problem we had, and so there were four areas actually in the county that they were absolutely very clear, those wards will change because they were too far away from that 1,599. And they were Lambattick, Mitchell Troy, my own ward, Gavilan, and Chapstow was also affected. The problem we had was that Lambattick was 29% too small, and neighbouring Usk was 24%, or projected to be 24% too big. So in the recommendation that we made as a group, we proposed that those two wards be combined to a two-member ward, and that was approved by full council in July 2020. And it's actually published in the Local Democracy and Boundary Commission for Wales report, which they published in December 2020. It's in Appendix Five, the Monmouthshire County Council submission. So I can reassure Simon that it was all above board and was approved by full council in the usual way. Madam Chairman, can I thank John Pearce and Amy Gullik for the vast amount of work they've done in supporting members through this review of county seats, but also the previous boundary review of town and community councils that we did back in 2018? There's a really important principle at stake here in this report, and that's that every resident eligible to vote in Monmouthshire should have an equal say about how Monmouthshire is governed. Currently, that's not the case. While I've got greater affection for my own ward as it is currently, it's grossly unfair that while I represent 970 electors, Councillor Dimmock and Councillor Fekins have got about two and a half thousand electors each in their wards. So this means that some residents have greater influence than others. Just as I think we should have parliamentary constituencies of equal size, councillors should represent approximately the same number of electors. And as I mentioned, the Boundary Commission has determined that in Monmouthshire, that number should be 1,599. And as I, as I mentioned, they were very clear that certain wards that were over 25% in variance from that figure will change. The cross-party panel that was set up firstly to consider Monmouthshire submissions, the initial consultation, and secondly, our response today to the draft proposals, I think worked really effectively, and we were successful in achieving common ground and building on what was agreed in those town and community proposals. While they've given some flexibility, that principle of equal representation, I think, is really important. So as a cross-party panel, we did try to put forward proposals which adhere not just to the Commission's guidance, but also to the spirit of it. So as a result, we are proposing a small number of multi-member wards to help achieve parity, and putting Usk and Lambattick together was one of those, because as I mentioned, you've got one ward that's 29% too small, one next door that's 24% too big. You put them together, and actually, you're only 2% away from, from that variant, so it's a lot fairer. There were some parts of the county where the solution was unclear. We spent a lot of time considering what you do with a problem like Mitchell Troy, even after the consequential changes to the community boundaries, which bring Penner Cloud into the county seat, it remained 26% too small, while neighbouring Trelick United was 24% too big. So when my community council discussed this, they were considering favouring a two-member ward, although I'm very mindful that that would create a very large geographical area for anyone to cover. The alternative is to move a piece of the, of the community of Trelick into Mitchell Troy, which, which could be, well, indeed is what the Boundary Commission have recommended in, in that instance. Another, another challenge for the cross-party panel was Port Skewett, a ward which is currently 19% too, too big, but is set to become 83% too big within five years due to the amount of building that's going on in that ward. So clearly, this, this ward is going to have to become a two-member ward sooner rather than later. As I mentioned, we, we, we worked very effectively together, I think, and, and did achieve agreement in many areas. There was one area where I disagreed with my colleagues in our, in our meeting last week, and I was very sadly outvoted when we were talking about the proposed changes to Chapstow. And personally, I didn't agree with the proposals that were put forward by the two local members in, in the Bulwalk area. But I, you know, that's, that's democracy. I didn't feel there was a strong case to go back and change the town and community boundaries, given that that's something the Boundary Commission said very clearly they will not consider. But given there was so much agreement across the county, I don't support reopening this report. And I, I think we worked very well together, and we put forward a set of proposals that I hope the Boundary Commission will, will consider. And I hope they will continue to give take note of the original proposals we put forward in our report last July, which do see significantly less variance in the Chapstow area than these latest proposals, which I can, I can see. We'll see variance of up to 58% within five years, which could create quite an unfair additional workload for a single councillor. But in conclusion, I'm, I'm very happy with this report, and there's been great consensus across the parties, and the panel has worked really effectively and been very well supported by John and Amy as our officers. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, full explanation. Thank you, Councilor John. Welcome, Councilor Thomas. I see you've now joined us. I appreciate if you could pop your camera off, I don't think you realise it's on. Thank you. Right, Councilor Smith, I think that must be a mistake. Your hand has gone up again, unless it's a
I have, yes, I have, if I may, because, yes, thank you very much, Richard, because that was really, really remiss of me not to say thank you to the officers who worked so hard putting all the information together and dealing with those meetings. So do Amy and John. Thank you very much. I sincerely appreciate your help. I got to know Monmouth, I've known Monmouth well for a long time, but by Jove, I know it a whole lot better now. John, you will be severely missed, sorely missed, dear, when you go. You should reconsider. I agree with you, Richard, there are variances across the county. Lambattick isn't the only one. No, it's quite all right. I agree with you that it is important that there is fair and equal representation for the electorate. Regarding Chapstow, when the debate was going on, I did think to myself, it's lovely when all the houses are so nicely together, rather than big rural areas. There's no waiting given to that. No, I will make with the Community Council our comments to the committee. It is important that we get the right thing, and also to remember there are other alternatives as well. So you never know, we might come up with something better. So thank you very much, Chairman, for your time, and thank you, members. And thank you as well, Richard, for being so good with the numbers on those meetings, because there were a lot of numbers. Thank you.
Right, okay, thank you. Councilor Kevin Williams next. Councilor Williams.
Thank you, Chair. I hope I'm, I'm showing. I'm very photogenic, as you can see. Just listening to Councilor John there, he's more than happy to support the Gavilan going in with Lambfoyst as a two-member board. He didn't seem so keen on other areas, which, you know, I don't quite understand, but hey, oh. Gavilan itself is due to have a considerable housing development, which would take it fairly close. I think it's about 1,400 there now, and it's likely to take it much closer to that, sort of 1,500. I will be having further discussions with the Community Council. The Community Council are overly happy because the two communities are not sort of whilst they're next to each other, and they share the Community Council. They are two different communities. And when Councilor John refers to a large geographic area in Mitchell Troy, I think the geographical area from the Keeper's Pond down to Lambfoyst Bridge is quite big. It goes out the other side of the heads of the valley, and it includes the whole of Gavilan and then through to Lambfoyst, which is quite a big geographical area for even two members. They have the same sort of issue in Llanelli Hill, I think, but you've got the three areas there, which, to my mind, isn't a great idea to have two members, but two-member wards, I don't think they work. But just let you know, Chair, that I will make some representations, and certainly not in my own self-interest either. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Watts next, please. Councilor Watts.
Yes, Chair, thank you. So I was really grateful for an opportunity to make some representation towards the committee regarding my ward formal, and obviously Dimitri also made a very strong argument really for retaining really his ward in a kind of format that was understood by the electorate. Effectively, what had gone on previously was a huge chunk, you know, Western Avenue, the oldest street in Bulwalk, was scooped out in my ward, Oss Crescent, Lord Eldon is as well. And from a, from a geographical perspective, and I won't go into the full details of it, it was a proper carve-up. It made absolutely no sense. Obviously, that would have, you know, when you looked at it, that would have had political implications, and I'm sure Richard John wasn't really thinking about that at all when he made his decision. However, you know, looking at it physically from, from above, you know, it, it really, really didn't make any sense. So I would, you know, like to take this opportunity that, you know, common sense has prevailed as far as the committee was concerned. I now feel, obviously, the way the votes are, that politics aren't involved in this, and I, I feel relieved, because I was a little bit worried about that for some period of time. But at least there is some kind of sensible outcome. So thank you to the committee chair.
Thank you, Councilor Watts. Right, nobody else has indicated they wish to speak, so can we have the voting facility, please? And I acknowledge Councilor Easton's with us now. Welcome, Councilor Easton. There's always a slight delay with the putting these in the chat box. It's quite a complicated process. Right. There we are, electoral review responses to the draft proposals. Or against abstentions, please, members.
It's not coming up on my screen, Madam Chairman.
All right, Councilor Higginson. It looks as though it's going to be clearly carried. You can state your vote verbally if you so wish.
Yeah, Paul.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'm fortunate I haven't got it on my screen.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Clark. Yeah. That's two verbal votes for. Yeah, that's clearly carried. Okay, thank you, members. So we will now move on to the next item, which is the oh, I'll read out the numbers so that anybody watching on the live stream will be able to see the chat. Probably 27, 29, 6. Right, Diary of Meetings, which Councilor Jordan is going to introduce. Thank you, Councilor Jordan.
Thank you, Chairman. Hopefully my camera will stay on this time. The council is required to agree a schedule of meetings for the next year of the council. And a schedule of meetings is attached to the papers. That's for approval. As per previous years, efforts have been made to avoid school holidays, and members are requested to look at this report and approve it. Some outside body meetings and dates have also been included, where they're available, but they may be subject to change by the organiser. Where we have those details, we've tried to minimise clashes wherever possible. Once a diary has been approved, paper copies will be printed and sent to those members who require them. But I think we've got to understand that in the present circumstances, there may well be significant changes in dates, but as we, as we have this diary here now, I'd ask that it be approved.
Thank you, Councilor Jordan. This person has indicated they wish to speak is Councilor Richard John.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a really brief comment to say, Councilor Jordan, I really welcome the fact that we're we're having virtually no meetings in, in school holidays in this next year. I know that as we move into the final year ahead of the election, I would hope that in, in local governments in Wales, we could see some significant changes in, in representation. You know, we have councils quite close to, to us where there are, where virtually every single councillor is, is an older white man. You know, we do need to make sure that we're all broadening the appeal of local government, and avoiding meetings in school holidays will help us attract prospective councillors from a broader spectrum of backgrounds and ensure that people of working age, we're also underrepresented in terms of female councillors, and people with young families, ensuring that they're not deterred from standing for election. So really pleased to see that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Penny Jones next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to second the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Tony Easton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry I was late. I was, another appointment. Yes, I support the provisional diary, but is there any indication that we could be meeting, any meeting, having any meetings in County Hall in the foreseeable future, say from April on, or March, April onwards? Is any provision to bring the smaller committees back into County Hall and to see the council operating, the council staff and the management operating more from County Hall? Can you see any future in the near, can you see anything in the near future where this could be facilitated?
Councilor Jordan, would you like to respond to that?
I think we're in, in, in the lap of the gods at the moment. I think if the figures for the pandemic reduce significantly, we may have some meetings, but I think we'll just have to play by and see, see where we go. I don't think anybody can make any decision at this stage.
No, but there were some considerations. There are some meetings which might, might have been linked together with some at County Hall, some at Senate Hall.
If I say, remote meetings at the moment, you are safe. You're safe in your own environment without having to meet other people in County Hall. The more people meet together, the more risk there is. So certainly, my recommendation would be to remain as we are for a considerable period of time, because it keeps you safe, especially at our age.
I'm not advocating we do it. I'm just looking at the future. Thank you.
Easton, can I suggest that you perhaps take that to Democratic Services? That could be an item for discussion, further discussion there.
I think John was looking at this just then. Okay, I'll switch off now. Thank you.
Be a good idea. John, you'd be more than welcome to speak if you wish, but I think we should leave that to the Democratic Services Committee. No, John has disappeared. Okay, we'll move on then. Councilor Ruth Edwards next.
Thank you very much, Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. Just saying about parents and school holidays and so on. Please don't forget that a lot of grandparents also do childminding duties as well, and that also can clash a little bit with meetings and so on. So I'd just be mindful that it's not just the parents that have problems, but also the parents, the grandparents as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilor Louise Brown.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I wasn't intending to say anything on this item, but I think when Yes, thank you, Chair. I wasn't intending to say anything on this item, but I think when councillor Richard John said about the fact that it was a better timetable in terms of avoiding the school holidays, the items do mention that they are provisional. And I just wondered whether the planning committee, which is on the third of August, could be considered for the twenty seventh of July instead. Because obviously, that is a committee that meets during the school holiday period, which may cause problems for the, those with childcare responsibilities and so forth. And I don't think a week's difference would make that much difference to it. And I think it's something that possibly the Democratic Services could consider because obviously, it does say provisional and it's something that you've mentioned could be considered there. Thank you.
And also at the planning meetings, the chair of the planning. councillor Harris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As far as I know, the twenty seventh or whatever it is of July, the school holidays will be one and truly enforced by then. So I don't think that it will make any difference. I think they usually break up towards the twentieth, twenty first of July, if I remember rightly. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak on this matter? I see, John, you came back on again. Did you wish to speak?
Only to say, Chair, that around that end of July, beginning of August time, we always have issues with trying to fit meetings in. I can check with planning if we can move it the week before, but I think the way the schedule works with the site visits and consultation with the applicants, et cetera, I think it's fixed. And everybody knows it as the first Tuesday of every month. It's that throughout the year, not just necessarily the school holidays. But we can check and we can come back to members on it.
Thank you. I think that's under councillor Easton's request for coming, you know, when it might be possible to come back into County Hall can all be looked at separately. I see the chair of planning, councillor Edwards has indicated you wish to speak. I'll invite you back in to speak on this one.
Right, thank you, Chair, for indulging me for that, just being chair of planning. Yes, there is an awful lot of work of setting up for a planning committee because of the the reports that have to be done, the applicants and so on, and those who wish to make representation. And I think we have to be, and it has never been a problem in the, what, seventeen, eighteen years that I've been on planning. So I think it would be, you know, better for everybody concerned if it was still kept as it is. As councillor Harris says, they've already broken up from school. And I think that continuity is the best thing that we can do. Especially if we can manage to do that, especially at the time we're in now, where there's going to be a lot of upheavals and changes anyway of meetings because of Covid. So the more we can keep to a definite schedule. I'm not saying that sometimes we will have to change it due to all sorts of unforeseen circumstances. But at the moment, I think as we've always done it that way, it's better to be as it is. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Right, we'll go to the vote on that one now for councillors to accept the diary of meetings for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. We have the voting application.
Mine has not come up again, Madam Chairman.
All right, would you like to verbally indicate your vote?
Yeah, for the, for the.
Thank you, councillor Higginson. It's clearly carried, we have nobody against it. We've got thirty four, four, thirty five with councillor Higginson. So thank you, members. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Right, we now have a motion from county councillor Martin Grochard.
Thank you, Chair. If I could explain to members that one of the joys of the day that we work from home at the moment is that this motion was included on the agenda for this county council almost in error. And to be honest, I wasn't aware that it was going to come up until the Labour Group met on Monday of this week. I had not intended for it to come to full council yet. It was really a first draft that needs further work doing on it. And I hope members won't be too upset if I ask at this point if it could be withdrawn from the agenda this afternoon. And I've had discussions with councillor Jane Pratt, who chairs the Climate Emergency Group, where there is considerable expertise around the areas that I referred to in the motion. And it would be good to be able to benefit from the expertise they can bring to the six bullet points that I've included in the original wording here. So with consent of yourself and council chair, I would ask if this could be withdrawn at this point, taken to the Climate Emergency Group for refinement and strengthening. And I would then look to bring it back with the intention of creating a Monmouthshire strategy that would enable the county council to become carbon neutral by twenty thirty. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Grochard. We have a second during the chat bar, councillor Howarth, so we'll go straight to the votes to enable you to withdraw your motion.
I still can't vote, Madam Chair.
Okay, we're happy to take yours verbally again if you wish, councillor Higginson.
Yeah, I like support councillor Grochard.
We're just waiting for the actual voting application to come up in the chat bar. Yeah, it hasn't come up yet, so. As I say, it takes a little time to work this out. There we are. So it's been proposed, it's been withdrawn, it's been seconded by councillor Howarth. So we just need members to indicate if they're happy for it to be withdrawn or not.
Yeah, I guess still not come up, Madam Chair. I'd like my favour of councillor Grochard withdrawing.
Thank you, councillor Higginson. Right, that's clearly been carried. I've got my microphone on, yes. That's clearly been carried, members, so thank you very much indeed for that. And thank you for your full explanation, councillor Grochard. We will now move on to your question. You have a question to county councillor Richard John.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, just as it's printed in the paper.
Too quick for me then, I'll turn my microphone back on. councillor Richard John then, pleased to respond.
Thank you. Well, firstly, can I thank Martin for his question? I know he's taken a keen interest in young people's issues as a member of this council. He was a very successful chair of the Children and Young People Select Committee. And he's always attended our Youth Engagement and Local Democracy Days. Although I must say, he has been known to attend one or two of them in a very loud and antisocial Hawaiian shirt. But pleased to see he's not wearing one today. I'll let that go. The Senedd and Elections Wales Act twenty twenty introduced legislation that will enable sixteen and seventeen-year-olds and foreign nationals to vote in the Senedd elections from May twenty twenty one. Similar enactments are included in the Local Government and Elections Wales Bill to allow the same individuals to vote in local government elections from twenty twenty two. The legislation requires councils to promote awareness of the arrangements for the registration and other steps the council can necessary to help relevant young people to register on the electoral roll. To that end, in undertaking the annual electoral canvas, where every residential property in Monmouthshire is contacted to ascertain who is eligible to vote at each address, a leaflet's been included to make residents aware that young people and foreign nationals are able to register to vote and with clear instructions on how to do so. These materials, these materials will also be used in the build-up to the elections in May twenty twenty one through the council's range of communication channels. Someone's trying to tune, it sounds like someone's trying to tune their radio in.
Anyone checking microphones, please, members?
So these same materials will be used throughout the wide range of the council's communication channels. Specific targeted information to those who are now registered to vote is being considered. But until we've got clarity on how the election will be administered during the pandemic, we're currently unable to provide further information. Currently, all applications to be included on the electoral roll require applicants to provide their date of birth and national insurance number as part of the registration process, which is used to verify the identity of the applicant and prevent fraudulent applications being processed. In ensuring that those electors who are not yet sixteen but will at the time of election, and as such be eligible to vote, it's necessary for fourteen and fifteen-year-olds to register on the electoral roll in anticipation of becoming sixteen. These electors, however, will not yet be issued with national insurance numbers. So it's therefore been necessary to develop local data matching processes using other council data sets to verify the applications of these electors. And so far, there have been eight hundred and twenty-four young electors added to the electoral roll in Monmouthshire. Our schools continue to encourage awareness of the democratic process and their right to vote through a range of means, inviting political figures to talk to students, using elections held in schools, school council and school leaders to demonstrate in action how elections work. A number of schools have held mock elections. And this has been supported by additional lessons in personal and social education, as well as in pastoral lessons. As a result of the pandemic, engagement workshops in the schools directly are not able to be conducted as originally planned. Whilst government have, however, established a working group to specifically consider how to engage with sixteen and seventeen-year-olds in the election process. And they're working with a wide variety of different organisations to put those plans in place. Work undertaken by the working group includes the creation of engagement resources, activity events, as well as a dedicated space on the HUD platform that's being developed to signpost young people to the information they need to be able to cast their vote. So those are some of the steps we're taking, but we're always open to ideas of further steps that we could then take, we could take to engage with young people.
Okay, thank you very much. You have a supplementary question, councillor Grochard?
Thank you, Chair. Quite simply, just taking that on a little bit, I think that it's not only teenagers, but the vast majority of adults probably as well, who are extremely confused at the links between constituency members of the assembly and list members of the assembly and where they, what happens when you actually cast a vote for the Welsh Government. I wonder if you, in your role, could at least get into the system? Because I think the new curriculum will give plenty of opportunity for a fuller explanation of how the system works on a par-proportional representation basis in Wales. So that young people at least might be better aware than perhaps people of my generation as to the difference between when you vote for a member for a constituency and when you vote for somebody as a list member. It's very confusing for many people. Thank you.
I think you're absolutely, I think you're absolutely right that there is some confusion amongst people of all ages and you know, we want to get away early today, so I don't want to go into, you know, how complex it can be with the Dhaun formula and so on. I mean, it must be really confusing for a lot of people as to how those regional seats are allocated. Because of course, they're allocated once the constituency results have been declared to ensure that the the allocation of seats is as close as possible to the proportion of votes cast. Of course, it's a far fairer system than if it was purely first past the post. And I think that's one of the great merits of the the Senedd system. Although I'm sure you might see some strengths in Labour having seventy-five percent of the constituency seats. But I think there is more that we can do and we've certainly, over the years, talked with Kirsty Williams during debates about the new curriculum, about the role for a political awareness and the way that our democracy works in Wales. There's a key educational role there. I think you're absolutely, absolutely right. But I agree with you in terms of the general population, you know. We're now about to see the sixth election to what was known as the Welsh Assembly and the turnout is still significantly down at both council and Senedd elections compared to what you would see in a UK-wide parliamentary election. And I think you're absolutely right that that does demonstrate perhaps a lower degree of awareness of how the system works. And I think there is a duty on all political parties, on the the Welsh Parliament itself, as well as the media, to try and ensure that during this forthcoming election campaign, as much is done as possible to raise awareness of how the system works and the fact that people do have two votes that they can use.
Thank you very much, councillor Richard John, and thank you, councillor Grochard, for your questions.
Thank you.
Right, we'll now move on to, we'd be pleased to know, the last item on the agenda, which is the minutes of the meeting held on the third of December. I've had a proposal from councillor Peter Fox to approve them and a second councillor Howard Giles. So as long as everybody's in agreement with that, if you're not, just please indicate. Otherwise, I will take it that you all approve the minutes of the third of December. Just give you a moment. Okay. All quiet. So that just leaves me now to close this meeting and thank you all for your contributions, for your attendance this afternoon, to all our officers and especially Democratic Services for organising these meetings. We've continued to be able to meet remotely. I appreciate everybody's time. You know, at the moment, things are so unpredictable, but I hope by the time we next meet in March, March the eleventh, the date has been changed to March the eleventh, please note that in your diaries if you haven't already done so. Things will be looking a lot better than they are at the moment, but in the meantime, keep safe and thank you, everybody, for your contributions to looking after each other in Monmouthshire. And we will continue to do so to keep our people safe and well, and we all support each other. Even if it's just a friendly smile when you're out for your walk and you have to cross the road, feel insociable, you have to cross the road, but you can still smile and acknowledge people. And that's what we're all doing to keep up the morale. So my best wishes and look forward to better days when we next meet. And wonderful chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, very much. Well done.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Sheila. Thank you very much indeed, Sheila. Excellent.